Yeah, I get it. You gotta have that in your back pocket, right? Yeah, yeah.
I've been that way. Who, me?
Did you see any notes in the...
Well, no, it was just, no.
He said he was on the track.
Yeah, he said that was the only thing I was reading.
Watching movies across the moon and saying, watch.
Nobody on.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this first meeting of Lomond City Council for the year 2025. And we'll start this by calling to order and ask for changes to the agenda. And I guess I would ask for one, that we will possibly move the mayor proclamation H1 to appointment of a few more people from page interrupted get here. So probably after... Probably before we get into F section. So hopefully everybody will be here before we get into the F section. And other than that, I think I've addressed any other speakers that are in the agenda. What I want to change, how we can move forward.
Do you have a... Just want to point out that I got them right everywhere else except for the agenda. There's on six, twenty twenty five, and on six for both the resolutions, right, on twenty four.
Oh, yeah.
And I even looked at it and didn't catch it.
It's Lori's fault.
Yeah.
So.
Again, it's been a tough, tough year.
I'm still in twenty twenty four.
With those typos and that one agenda change, are we okay with approving the agenda?
I will move to approve the agenda with this flexibility to move the position of either of each one.
Thank you. Second, I can mark. Moving second to approve the agenda with a couple of changes. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda with the three items, consent minutes, liquor license, and a poor laureate approval. And we do have a poor laureate Scott Morse in our, in the audience, an applicant to have an address.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say.
Open communications, yeah.
Sorry.
The, the communications. Now, this is the time that open agenda items that people want to talk about that aren't on the agenda, are welcome to come forward, identify themselves with the microphone and make their case for the more of the public. Anybody here from the public to address that? Then we'll move to the consent agenda, yes.
Alright.
Three items, and Scott is actually here, the, or the poor laureate, and Marie, representing the Arts Council. Do you have anything to say at this point, or before you...
No, I, we just thought it would be a good chance for Scott to, for y'all to see Scott. And he's a part laureate, and it's a two-year position, and it's underwritten by the Arts Council. And he's got a lot of friends, so he'll share those with you over the next couple of years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to the Arts Council, thank you, Scott, and welcome. You communicate, you're welcome to new here.
With that, and approval of the consent agenda?
Thank you, Paul, for a second. Second, yeah. Moving second to approve the consent agenda, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is public hearing on proposed amendment number ten for Lomond Urban Renewal Plan. And officially open the public hearing, and you want to start with staff comments?
So the plan itself is required anytime that the plan to use urban renewal tax activity financing, you propose pot project, it has to be listed for the plan. So this is kind of a two-step process tonight. First is the plan amendment number ten, and the second will be a development amendment based or necessitated that amendment.
Staff comments in the convention about the path to St. Joe's store and water station, street construction, and anticipated proposed Quick Star development. Casey, from Quick Stars here from Des Moines, if there are questions for, or at this point, otherwise we get to a later on agenda, but this is a public hearing time. If anybody here to speak to that issue. Wait for a minute or so, then close the public hearing. So anybody on Zoom change?
Nope.
Last call for comments in the public. Otherwise, I will officially close that public hearing and then move to E one, which is a resolution for approval, one six twenty twenty five A, declaring an area of the city to be a developed and divided area that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, or a combination thereof of such area is necessary in the interest of public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city, thus meaning such area is appropriate for urban renewal projects and adapting the amendment number ten to Lomond Urban Renewal Plan. Anybody have anything to add at this point?
I do not.
With that, I can move approval of resolution one dash six dash twenty twenty five A.
Thank you, Paul, for a second.
Second.
Move to second, moving forward, one six twenty twenty five A. And this is the final call for questions or comments, otherwise we'll have a roll call vote. Marshall.
Tyler.
Yes.
West.
Yes, Engel.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes. And that's where this is moving forward. Tell you, my ears in Lomond, this is the most anticipated thing. In my, my ears in Lomond. And not a week that goes by that people are clamoring at me and say, are they digging in? Are they digging in? But thank you for your interest in our community. That call, roll call vote to pass, now we go back to E two, public hearing on proposals and changes of the government agreement with Quick Trip. Second step, officially open that public hearing. Comments from staff, questions from council, comments from public?
We have a question.
Sure.
Based on the agreement. The developer's contribution has a limit not to exceed.
So, excuse me.
Sorry.
Would that not be more appropriate to be asked during the resolution rather than the public hearing?
Yeah.
Let's hold on.
Tom asked if we had any, yeah, okay.
Anything from the, as far as public hearing is concerned? And I'll officially close the public hearing on E two. Now, you're in, and before we proceed to G two, which is resolution one six twenty twenty five B, approving and authorizing execution of the development agreement by any community in the city of Lomond and Quick Trip Incorporated. Now, I think you have a question.
Um, the developer's contribution has not to exceed. Obviously, we know that often tends things cost more than you plan. So are you comfortable with the city being able to take up that abstract in that sort of, in that situation?
So here's one of the issues, and I've said this when we initially talked about this. The Quick Star development is kind of the catalyst that we're expecting Rachel Street's extension to facilitate, but their contribution is based upon technically if they had to, you know, start from scratch, what, what Quick Star would be putting in as far as infrastructure is concerned? We have the ability to work with others that will, that will utilize this, to recoup more of these costs should be in the future, but yeah, because Quick Star is the first, you attempt not to, you know, blame them or, or...
Run them.
Run them, prefer them.
For being the first.
First to the table, but so, yes, I'm comfortable, and we've talked about it quite a bit. There's some work that we have to do on the east side of Highway one of Rachel is putting under residential streets. And then the things that are, that's part of this. But, yeah.
I'm good with that, just one last question.
So for, for those in the audience, there really isn't an incentive back necessarily to, to Quick Trip per se, in the sense that we're giving them incentives. The city would put the infrastructure, traffic signals, stormwater, water sewer, street infrastructure that would be required to construct Rachel Street, of which Quick Star would take advantage of, of its own infrastructure. But all of that, Rachel Street area, is going to be necessitated by the fact that Rachel Street eventually will connect back up to the north-south here that I got put in for, for CHI as well. So overall, they're agreeing to a minimum value of two and a half million. That is kind of my insurance to at least help offset half of the bond cost. So the new value that they bring down there will, the taxes that they pay will offset at least half of the cost of our bond payment. And they all put up to four hundred fifty thousand, twenty-five percent of four hundred fifty thousand, whatever's left, into the improvements. And again, we'll open quite a few acres of ground. The city has determined that that Rachel Street is going to be the one and only access point to Highway one to develop, so this requires a significant amount of investment in order to make that happen, traffic signals being the biggest part of that, so.
Quite satisfied with that. There are any other questions? I'd move to approve resolution one dash six dash twenty twenty five B, approving and authorizing execution of the development agreement by between City of Lomond and Quick Trip Incorporated.
I'm happy to second that, like Craig. Moving second to approve the resolution on the development agreement between City of Lomond and Quick Trip Incorporated. There are no comments or questions, are ready to vote on this? Marshall.
Anderson.
Yes.
Tyler. West.
Yes.
Engel.
Yes.
And the resolution passes. Anything else on that area?
Now, the bench staff pretty worth it, starting with those, and Quick Trip, Quick Star as well, who are coming to our community.
Okay, you're persisting in this process.
Yeah, thank you, we appreciate it.
The site plan should be, for the redevelopment, should be forthcoming in the next year.
No, I appreciate the map on page seventy, just to give a better understanding what it's going to look like, so.
I would agree with Tom, though, that I'd like the feedback from basically. It's quite the hot topic right at the moment.
I, I did some research today, and I loved seeing that Quick Star's been named a top workplace by the Des Moines Register, by Paper of Minnesota, and another one in Wisconsin. So I just really appreciate that and the fact that we're going to have at least twenty full-time employees. So, thank you.
Really, thank you, we're excited. I'll get to it.
But interviews, Alba Tyler.
Casey Bonder, I'm a real estate manager for Quick Trip and Quick Star. So thank you again for reviewing the development agreement tonight. Thank you, Chris and Lori, you're great to work with to get it to this point. And we are still under contract, we're working through a few things, and obviously, like Chris said, we have a site plan that will be coming to PNC and City Council as well. But just a little bit of background on Quick Trip and Quick Star. We started in nineteen sixty-five, still a family-owned company. In two thousand, the Zieglo family bought out the Hanson family, and so we are still owned by four generations of the Zieglo family. So we have, I think it's eight hundred and ninety convenience store locations in six states. So continue, continue our growth there. And as you mentioned, one of the top workplaces. So I think we're one of the few or only companies in the United States that the family gives back to the employees forty percent of their pre-tax profit. So that's full-time and part-time employees, and they just have a high bar set for the company. And so, yeah, looking forward to hopefully getting through our last approvals here and hopefully can move it forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Casey.
Thanks, Casey.
Totally different venue, I'm a conference call ahead this morning regarding to childcare and possible mention of childcare in tonight's, in the state of state, the rest of the governor. It was talking about, was the Iowa foundation, working on a foundation with businesses, contributing towards this cause. And the four corporations that were listed in Iowa that were going to be the lead donors to this were Hy-Vee, John Deere, and Quick Star. So that's pretty impressive group to be in the state of Iowa, so I appreciate your presence there, even though you're not in our community yet. Let's finish up E three, and then we'll go to page something. E three is public hearing considering ordinance to amend comprehensive plan and official zoning map to rezone certain property openly known as ten forty Second Avenue Northwest from traditional residential to public use overlay to limited industrial. And I'll officially open that public hearing, and see if there's anybody here to the public that wants to speak to that. And this is the transition of the former public worksite, basically, and the transition out to Bryant Road. Anybody here speak to that? Still nobody on Zoom?
Nobody.
I think we'll close the public hearing then, and move to F one, for ordinance approval amendment here. One six twenty twenty five A, amending the comprehensive plan and official zoning map to rezone certain property openly known as the ten forty Second Avenue Northwest from traditional residential to public use overlay to limited industrial. And staff is, is asking that we suspend the rules and proceed to the final reading.
So there, I'm going to preface this by saying that there are four of you. You need all four in favor in order to do that. So I would only ask during the discussion if there's anybody that would not be of interest in voting in favor of this resuming. They just leave it at the first reading then, because if you try to wave, and you don't have a four to vote, it will fail. But this is the old public worksite. It has been operated as a light industrial parcel for as long as the city has utilized it. Because we're a governing body, our zoning has a public use overlay that we can put on top of the county zoning district in the entire city and basically use it how we see fit. So we're not asking, I don't believe we're not changing the zoning from, from a set of uses that we've been utilizing it for when we go to sell this. That doesn't, that public use overlay doesn't translate when we sell this. So when we put this open for CO bids, the underlying zoning needs to be limited industrial in order for it to maintain the value that was identified in the agreement.
So as I was reading my agenda, before I got to your note that you wanted to suspend the rules, I was going to recommend that we suspend the rules because we've been talking about this for some time now, and this will facilitate moving forward with the sale and recouping monies that would be used to help pay for our project under. So from my perspective, I agree with that.
Yeah, that negative balance, I would really like to get off the books.
And I could recall, and then looking at that math, it just makes complete sense for it to be light industrial. I mean, it's not a residential area by any means.
Now, Davis Park does offer, or will act as a buffer regardless, and so we're not rezoning property up to a residential neighborhood. Davis Park was swimming around, always be the buffer, at least two hundred feet, that the city will maintain.
I'm in favor. Thanks for addressing procedural issues that will come up during this vote. This is really two motions, the first is the first reading, and then the second one, there's a separate rule.
You'll have to make a motion to approve the first reading. Upon success, you can send paper motion or hear motion to waive the second and third.
Thanks for clarifying that, so we're...
I'd make a motion to approve ordinance one dash six dash twenty twenty five, ordinance to amend the comprehensive plan and official zoning map to rezone certain property from the traditional residential to limited industrial.
Thank you, Paul, for a second. I can, I can, I can mark. Going on the first reading here. So if we move the second in, I call the mark, to go ahead with the first reading of this ordinance. And if there are no questions, have to raise a vote on it, Marshall.
Engel.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
And that gets us to the second option that Chris mentioned, that was moving to, forward to the, going to the final reading, and that's a separate motion and second. I will open, and page four.
I will make a motion to approve the first reading, proceed to the second, or to the final.
Final, yeah. Let's make it, we're finally, yeah. Stephanie, and I take it, right?
Sure.
I'm second then. Stephanie and Craig for the final reading here. Are there any questions about approving that final reading of this ordinance change? Not, I guess, you're ready to vote.
Engel.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
And that ordinance passes. Thank you for getting us through that process, and good luck in the transition, because good luck to all that and staff for finishing the transition. You're almost done anyway, aren't you?
Two.
Me to say. Moving to mayor proclamation, establishing January twenty twenty five human trafficking convention and awareness month. Chief, do you usually talk, do some introductions here at this?
No, you don't.
Why is we can involve people from the, teams interrupted? Just identify yourselves and your group.
I'm Lisa, I'm with Chains Interrupted.
I'm Erica Alba with St. Luke's Unity Point Cedar Rapids.
I'm Tishia with Chains Interrupted as well.
I first just want to start off by saying thank you for having us here tonight. It's a, it's difficult to imagine human trafficking exists in the state of Iowa, but it does. Take the case of Lila, for example, a sixteen-year-old girl who got away from her trafficker that brought her to Iowa from another state. She was found hiding in a local business in the state of Iowa. Lila did not know who to trust, or she was very scared, and she was not forthcoming about her situation. Fortunately, the business that, that she was in, that she was hiding in, was trained by training. Chains Interrupted had received training from us. They recognized the signs of trafficking from the training, and they also knew how to talk with her in a way that did not scare her off or traumatize her any further. They called Chains Interrupted to find out what their next steps would be. And, and we were happy to report that the girl was now safe and back with her family in the state that she came from. I just want to say thank you, Tom Weisler, mayor of Mount Vernon, and the city council, law enforcement, all educators, community leaders for your commitment to raising awareness against human trafficking and taking action to combat human trafficking in your community. If you, your friends, family, coworkers, church, workplace, or schools would like additional training, we're here to help with that as well, just reach out to us. We have eighteen specialized training programs. Contact chainsinterrupted@info, info@chainsinterrupted.com.
If you want to say just one thing, sorry, Chief Shannon is, is a giant amongst human trafficking law enforcement, so we're really grateful for what is already going on here in Mount Vernon. You guys are very pro-understanding and pro-child and family, and we're really grateful. And I know you wrote an article last year for us, and that was a huge blessing. We appreciate that very, very much, so we hope to do more in Mount Vernon. We've actually asked to hold our Red Sun event here this year, so.
You thank the country for the song of publishing, right?
Yeah, it was good, it was good.
And I'm Erica Alba, and I'm also with Chains Interrupted, helping with them as one of their volunteers. I am also the chair of our human trafficking committee at St. Luke's in Cedar Rapids, and I am pleased to announce that we are now system-wide, all unity point, health system, hospitals, clinics throughout three states are human trafficking trained, and we are now in the process of going to every department to go over the policy procedures with the staff, to make sure everyone knows how to understand human trafficking and how we are to treat our patients and our survivors. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies, thank you, um, thank you. And thank you for bringing up the proclamation so that I don't have to.
Well, no, I mean, we kind of jumped ahead and you didn't get to read it, but you're gonna read it.
Yeah, I guess we are at that point.
You guys are so excited. I'm so excited. We'll take pictures later.
Nobody here, this has some length, this is, and this reinforces the comments that, from everybody, and to recognize that Chief Shannon is a leader in this area, but this is important stuff, and that's why it's important to do it, and that's why I wrote the article, and that's why it brings us here, for how many years have we been involved with this proclamation? But City of Lomond, Iowa, Human Trafficking and Awareness Proclamation. Whereas human trafficking is the use of force, fraud, or coercion to compel a person into commercial sex acts or labor services against their will. Exploitation of a minor for commercial sex is human trafficking regardless of whether any form of force, fraud, or coercion was used. There is no such thing as child prostitution, and whereas Iowa has been, has seen a concerning rise in labor trafficking cases, particularly among immigrant children from Central America who are often coerced into exploitive agricultural and factory work under the pretense of opportunity, a trend mirrored in other rural communities across the nations. Sadly, sexual exploitation often goes hand in hand with labor trafficking, which can also involve illegal arms and drug trafficking in Iowa. And whereas despite increased advocacy and resources, there remains a stark gap between the number of survivors receiving assistance and the successful prosecution of perpetrators, with fewer than five percent of reported trafficking cases in the Midwest resulting in criminal cases, convictions in twenty twenty-three. And whereas despite, despite increased awareness and efforts, human trafficking continues to be underreported and often goes undetected, to the true extent likely underestimated due to its inclines in nature, the ability to hide in rural areas, and the reluctance of victims to come forward. Studies suggest that only one percent of trafficking victims are actually identified. And whereas every business, community organization, faith community, family, and individual can make a difference by working to protect the vulnerable within their sphere of influence by addressing the problem of internet sex trafficking and exploitation, especially for targeting, that are targeting Iowa's children. Nationwide, we have moved away from a play-based to a screen-based childhood. One in five youth aged twelve, ten to seventeen report being approached by online predators. Both of these are only the numbers reported. Twenty twenty-three, social media platforms like TikTok, Facebook, and YouTube flag millions of pieces of child sexual abuse material, which were referred to the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children for further investigation. U S teen, U S teens report spending an average of nine hours a day online, excluding homework time. And whereas the city of Mount Vernon joins Chains Interrupted in their dedication to providing community outreach and education, legislative advocacy, training, promotion of services to survivors of human trafficking, and collaboration with law enforcement, and now therefore be resolved that I, Thomas M. Weisler, the mayor of Lomond, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of January as Human Trafficking Convention and Awareness Month, and encourage all our citizens to become more informed of this growing problem, to be diligent, diligent, and report suspicious activity, and to work towards solutions to end trafficking in all its forms in our community. For assistance with this, reach out to Chains Interrupted at three one nine, three six four, zero two two two. If you see something that doesn't look right, reach out to the National Human Trafficking Hotline at eight eight eight, three seven three, seven eight eight eight. Date is this sixth date of, of January twenty twenty-five on my signature. So that is the resolution that we are proclaiming for City of Lomond, for Chains Interrupted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Moving on to motion for approval, got claims list that was set up this afternoon, most recently. Have we had questions about anything on that, or?
I'd love to agree with the claims list just presented.
A second.
A second. Moving second to approve the most recent claims list that presented, already voted that, all in favor of that motion, please say aye. Have written voted that all favor that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Will you carry it? Next item for approval is discussion consideration necessary electric and fiber optic work of Smart Street Light Project. Council action is needed.
So we have, we probably have worked through the process in order to facilitate both fiber optic and our electric needs, so the plugins that we have talked about placing with the new streetlights, Wi-Fi capabilities, all of those things that have to go along with the construction. Now, if you remember, a lot of putting, purchasing the poles, maintaining the poles, doing all of that, but in order for us, if we have special add-ons that are responsible for, for that part of the program. Now, both the fiber optic and electric runs that will be made as part of this project can be easily translated to the downtown, uptown, sorry, uptown streetcape project. So I'm not concerned, we're more or less kind of jumping ahead a little bit in that project and getting, you know, one of the items completed prior to having that discussion. But initial estimates are in the neighborhood of five hundred thousand, so I just wanted to make the council aware of that. I don't necessarily need to funnel votes tonight on this, but I did want to give you the heads up that this is coming down. V and K is currently working on planning specifications without forbid, given the estimated cost. But that'll have to get done relatively soon in order to get the, the streetlight program moving forward. So.
Are you surprised it was that? I, I was, but I don't have much context.
So I really was hoping that we could get away with one of the, like either fiber or running outlets, but for as many programs as we run downtown and our electric needs, this will clean up a lot of things. It was actually higher to be eliminating. Oregon does a really good job of eliminating costs, so I'm happy with where we got it to. But yeah, it was a significant more investment than I had hoped for.
So you say we're not voting on this?
No, I just wanted, you know, this is an opportunity to ask questions. You can ask questions moving forward until we did specifications come forward, but once we did this project out, the timeline will be fairly quick in order to make the decision. But we were going to have to likely do this regardless. And even if you don't pull, pull the first strings on the full uptown reconstruction, we're still going to have to do some, some projects uptown, especially with the, the street improvements. So as we have that conversation, we're gonna spend money up here, it's just a matter of how quickly.
Thanks for making us aware of that, because it was a little bit of a surprise.
And this kind of being incorporated into the streetscape project, will this tackle a lot of the things that, you know, probably come up in regards to holding festivals and doing a better job of streaming, you know, having fewer power cords streamed throughout the streets.
That's the goal.
Okay.
And essentially what we're doing is, is moring underneath, moring conduit underneath the streets and sidewalks and having the plugins on the new streetlights. Gives us more of an opportunity, right now we use two panels that have been put together and we have to strategically locate them and then we run cords across, across the sidewalks. It's not gonna eliminate all of the cords, they're still gonna have to connect to the streetlights, but we can work with CDG now moving forward with various vendors to kind of strategically place them so they're closer and we don't have major hazards moving forward, so that's the goal.
Along with that, we always, we always pay an electrician to come and hook those cords up to a panel. We can alleviate that cost every, every festival as well.
Timeline for the, the lights, I look like it was before Tucker Law.
Fingers crossed, it's still.
That's still, okay, good.
This has been a process.
So, no action with this one, just any other?
No, the poles are ordered. Action, but I didn't want us to bring that up.
I'm, I'm glad to see it moving forward and I do, ultimately it will be part and parcel of a, of a future program and being a progressive city, this just makes huge sense where we want to, want to take it. The more we can make our uptown attractive, be able to communicate, I just think this is the right way to go. And I do appreciate that, so nobody likes a five hundred thousand dollar surprise.
Staff, give us that, Lynn?
Yeah.
Move to number three, discussion consideration of pay application number three on Glen Street Extension.
Pay application number three is an amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents. Actually quite fast, but they were able to pull off in a fairly short amount of time. I don't know if anybody got to drive by when they were shooting the high-risk human. That project, like I said, is pretty much done, came in under budget, so excited to get this one off.
I move to approve pay application number three for Glen Street in the amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents. Is there a second?
Second.
Craig and Stephanie? Move the second to the fourth, pay application number three on Glen Street Extension. Have written voted on that, all favor that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who carries? Next item is consideration invoice five, seven one eight six three, uptown streetscape improvements. Council action is needed.
This is just a small, small invoice.
I'd move to approve invoice one five seven one six three to J E O in the amount thirteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move the second to the fourth, one five seven one six three. And for any comments or questions, all favor that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is consideration of the old fire station site plan, Mount Vernon R U S E. Council action is needed.
The, the site plan itself was submitted in your packet. I'm excited that they, they will get this under construction and it's gonna be a huge, a huge investment on their part for the building. It's gonna look completely different, they're doing a lot of things with fiber city and things like that. It's in the downtown district, so zoning's correct. If you have any issues.
Looks great.
How familiar are you?
This is perfect timing, because I've asked about this a few times just in the last week. What's going on there?
Everybody's out there.
Really great to see this.
This is quite a trip.
Any other questions otherwise, ready for a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan as, as presented. For the old fire station.
Second. Any more? Move the second to the fourth, site plan for the fire station, site plan. And for the vote on that, all favor that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Please pass this information on to your partners. Discussion consideration of V and K invoice five one three seven eight. Number two, Rachel Street Improvements.
I don't, I mean, they're just something, they're all projects that are under way, so we're, you have to vote individually on the next year invoices, but they're often V and K.
I would move, I would move to approve the V and K invoice five one three seven eight dash two in the amount of nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-five cents.
Correct. You're called. First one, you all voted on that Rachel Street improvement, all favor that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On the same vein, Glen Street Extension Project.
I'd move approval of invoice five one three seven two dash six in the amount of seven thousand dollars, five hundred and eighty-nine, no, seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and two cents.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Move the second on the next V and K invoice. Now, have written voted on that, all favor that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. J eight is on the same vein on twenty twenty-four sanitary sewer rehab project. Council action is set.
I would move to approve V and K invoice five one three six four dash five in the amount of seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-two cents.
Second? Correct. Move the second to move forward to the next V and K invoice. And if there is vote on that, all favor that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Session consideration of a ladder truck purchase contract. Council action is needed. We got representatives in the fire station here.
So the chiefs are here, they've put together an extensive packet of information for you on the justification of the purchase of the ladder truck. My memo does not state whether or not we should purchase a ladder truck or not purchase a ladder truck. That is, in my mind, up to the individuals that have a lot more knowledge about how it is to work. I did talk about the potential financing. The base price for this ladder truck is one million, five hundred and ninety-four thousand and seventy-one dollars. I will, or people will ask, is this a lot of money? Yes. Ten years ago, you can buy it, first out apparatus for about a half a million.
They wouldn't take four years to get here?
No.
Three to four years.
Typically, you can find, you can find them on the open market now, COVID's changed inventory a little bit, but those same, those same apparatus are well above eight hundred thousand dollars today. So a lot of ladder trucks is potentially is expensive. It's not ridiculously higher than what we would have to pay to, to replace this engine, depending on what, what we put in that package. There is a discount, I put that in there, if you pay for this upfront. At this time, I'm gonna recommend against. Normally, I would be very ecstatic with a two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar discount, but with a four-year build time, the fact that we would have to borrow, we didn't have enough cash on hand, the interest that we would have to pay on four years while it was under construction, and the debt capacity that we would have to give up for that four years, I just don't know that it's worth this two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar discount. Now, with that being said, approval of the contract, once this moves forward, does lock in a council four years from now to potentially have to borrow funds in order to pay off the rest of it. Now, they will have significantly more cash on hand. They won't have to borrow a year as much as they would have to borrow today. So the difference being, we would likely borrow about one point one million today. That borrowing can get reduced by roughly six or seven hundred thousand, depending on what gets spent out of that if we wait the four years. So remember that unlike most cities, we have a voter-approved capital, capital equipment that goes specifically to the fire department. So that, that voter-approved levy brings in about a hundred and five thousand dollars per year, give or take. So that cash will continue to build up. Now, there are other needs that they will have between now and the end of that four years that will come out of that account as well, but allowing us to build up the cash and borrow less, unless there's a drastic run on interest rates, I think will be the smart move for this.
We have to replace engine two fifteen anyway, right?
Yeah, it's nineteen ninety-five.
Ninety-five, correct.
And you said that that would be, would be less than the, the ladder truck, but still significant.
Really?
Yeah.
And looking at diversifying apparatus, so over the course of the last nine years, I think both public safety departments have done an incredible job for both Mount Vernon and Lisbon of working together and trying to identify gaps, each is filling, so we're not duplicating service. One of the things when I met with the chiefs, that they pointed out was the fact that if we purchased another engine that we already have, and Lisbon already has, we duplicated equipment, but it doesn't necessarily change anything for us. Some of the things that they had pointed out to me during this process that I didn't necessarily think about is, we had a grain bin rescue, a lot of things went right. A lot of things could have definitely gone the other direction, it was fast, the ladder truck will give them more opportunities. Had our public works crew, not had the equipment available, had the farmer themselves, not have equipment available, it could have been a drastically different story. And, and these are big purchases, you hate to use these what-ifs as your basis for trying to justify a purchase of this nature, but we do have tall buildings, we have a lot of, we have a lot of students on campus, they're old.
The buildings, not the shit.
The buildings are, are old and we, we are very lucky that we have a very professional department. And I usually, as an administrator, I'm very wary of making a purchase like this of a ladder truck. I've been part of them before and they've not been utilized well. I do believe that the reason it's taking a four-year build is they're very specific on the specifications that they have for this, this truck. So they've, as you can see, they've done the research, I think they planted the seed on this. It gave me about two or three months, I think, when I first got to the, that this is something that they were. So they've done a lot of research over the years, gone through COVID and Virial and waited, and now it's time.
First, I appreciate the financial information you provide and I think that obviously, anytime you're making a capital purchase of this nature, it's, it's important to evaluate all that information. And I appreciate the fact that it was pulled together, both from your perspective and from the chief's perspective, in a, in a very understandable way for a common man like me. Not a rocket scientist, not a firefighter, not a police chief, not a city administrator. So I really appreciate that. The other thing I really appreciate is the presentation put together highlighting the, the value that this brings that we don't think about every day. Unfortunately, we often think about it after it was too late. And I've been in this community, been sitting at this, this, in one fashion or another for more years than probably should admit, but the, if the fire chiefs and the way they work together, not only between Mount Vernon and Lisbon, but I think it's really important to point out the other agencies that we have, the twenty eighty agreements, mutual aid. This is another tool in the toolbox that will assist a wide area beyond. beyond just the city limits of Mount Vernon. You know, I, I again, been here long enough to see some of the events that occurred and, and, you know, know that these are lifesaving devices. And I, I fully support this plan. And the method of, of paying for it, I believe, is the right way to do it. I agree, a discount only has value if you realize it. And I don't believe we'll realize it based on the four years of interest and all of that. So I'm fully supportive of this.
And I want to jump in real quick too briefly. Yes, my neighbor, George's house, that house saw it burn down. You know, trying to help us neighbors get out of the house and see them work on that house. You know, and how they had, you know, create the holes in the roof. And you guys did a phenomenal job with that. And just knowing that that, the ladder truck would be so helpful for buildings and houses to get on top of that and, and it puts you guys in a safer position. That's what we really need to keep in mind as well too, because we can't lose anything. Your, your safety needs to be proud of it also.
Report included, it's pretty inclusive, so really a case for change, I would say. We're currently building a three-story building for over fifty five. We're heavily invested in. Chris alluded to the Cornell buildings that are there. And in my last meeting with Cornell representatives, I mentioned the fact that the city is planning to invest possibly. They were in discussion about fire trucks or ladder truck that would help them in most of their buildings that would not be adequately served in the case of a serious fire now, so. And I know this is covering four years of councils, but I would report back that.
There, there are times when you, it's part of the planning that we're responsible for. And I believe this is one of those times. So what would we make the?
Will you make the motion to approve the purchase of a new ladder truck? Are those prices still solid?
I would have to double check, but the last communication I had was February was going to be the possible price increase. And it was like a percent, I think, was it?
I think it's based upon that price, probably not to exceed like one point seven million dollars. Here's what I like about what we're doing here, as opposed to when I walked through the door. Previous councils encumbered these councils few per year, per multiple years. So the nice part about being able to get more cash on hand and reduce the size of the potential bond in the future is to reduce the payback as well. If we were to have to buy, go out to the bond market for one point one million dollars today, that's likely a twelve-year note. If we can go and reduce a dollar amount four years in the future, there's, there's a possibility that's a seven, eight-year note. So you do save on the interest. And I don't think you're going to force that future council into something that you, you yourselves have experienced. There's three bonds. Starting my ninth year, there are three bonds that were here around the books for at least three years before that, that are still on the books.
I would move approval of purchasing a new ladder truck in the amount not to exceed one point seven million.
Thank you, Paul. They're seconded?
I'm second.
Paul Mertz. Moving seconded, report for ladder truck purchase. Mr. Guy should have three pancakes.
Two pancakes.
So remember who it was.
To make nature dance.
Thank you very much.
We didn't have to order on it yet. He's getting paid that way.
There could be pancakes in, well, for all.
To approve, yes.
Sure, it's what they allowed in Mount.
That's right. Then anyway, catch up with the motion on the floor to move forward with the ladder truck purchase as presented by Paul, I go to Mark. If there's a vote on that, all favor that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let me say that the proposal that you guys put together, whoever the authors were, did a really nice job. Every time I had a question, it was answered later on, including in the PowerPoint presentation that you put together, so well done again.
Jones.
Well, thank you.
Yep, thank you very much.
Moving to reports. Anything reports? If it's a discussion. Mayor's comments, I guess two things I've mentioned. Our city manager is on the LDC calendar December, I'm sorry, January sixteenth, I believe, for the Thursday afternoon.
Oh, for the speaker series?
LDC series one o'clock. He does a state of the union dress.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, city manager, I don't have.
Chris will be speaking at the LDC. Always very informative and always draws a big crowd, too. And a reminder to council members during the month of January to get me some form appraisal of Chris so that I can present him as a little the year appraisal process. Any other reports, council, committee, city administrator?
Just that we'll discuss the borrowing now that you approved the development agreement on Wednesday. Usually Lori Marsh and I will discuss that with bond council. The other thing that Tom asked me to mention tonight or discuss is there's been a lot of fanfare about the state legislature property tax reform being priority number one for them this year. So I, I don't think that there is an administrator or city out there that doesn't necessarily agree with the state when it comes to the fact that property tax needs to be reformed and, and so. How we get there is always the trick. It did start or initiates property tax changes last year. We grew, Tom Vernon grew eight percent because we were over six percent. They had to take three percent off. So we were down to five percent. Rollback was eight percent, went down eight percent. So by the time that we started like the conversations last year, we were actually in the hole. Pretty hard to do here. You take kind of a growth mentality, you're making some investments in your communities to make sure that things like the CR, CHI come in, in making investment in your communities. At the same time, the increase in value that they're not getting credit for makes it very difficult to even have these conversations about tip incentives and opening your doors. So I'm anxious to see what they decide to do this year. I would actually expect another decent growth in the number of houses that come online, but I'd expect the same thing. Rollback did go down eight percent. It's actually gone back up by a couple percent, but it's still overall down six percent from where it was two fiscal years. So, you know, the staff does a, an excellent job of going through their budgets and trying to make cuts where they need to make cuts. I think the issue that I have is there's nine hundred forty six cities in Iowa and we're nowhere near the same. We all have different needs. We have different expectations from the citizens that live there. And locally, I think they elect you to make those decisions as smartly as you can. Overall, the tax rate, the levy rate in Mount Vernon has increased fifty cents over the course of twenty plus years, fifty cents. That doesn't even cover inflation. So I think that we do an excellent job, not only informing the populace about what is going on, but keeping them abreast of what is coming up. We go out of our way to do the speaker series, look at, at possible locations for savings. So we'll call the sales tax and subsidies, all things that we try to make as far as possible. But that's my little spiel. I don't know what's going to happen. There's three, my understanding is there's three pathways that they're discussing. One, where they're just talking about capping all tacking amenities at a certain percent. And no idea how, how it's even going to be feasible. But I don't want to put too much out there, only because I haven't seen any specific proposal right now. It's all rumors. So we've had some good conversations with Representative Building. We're an hour of Center Point final December to discuss that with, with her. You know, and you read about it in the Gazette. The city's position is they need to look at values. Assessors are pointing their back at, at cities. I told Cindy, there's ninety nine counties and there's nine hundred forty six cities. So do the math. The value of your home increasing by a hundred thousand dollars because your neighbor sold it for a hundred thousand dollar more is the issue that everybody is concerned about. And they can cap that growth if they would like. Our levy rates haven't changed much. And other than tax dollars that we continue to be to spend. So our gas service levy is one hundred ten cents or even more. The, the one portion of the, the year taxes, your levy that is tied specifically to the spend that can fluctuate as high or as low as it needs to is the gas service levy. It covers all of the bonds that we talked about there tonight. It's less than ten cents in Mount Vernon. If they make these changes, it could be as high as three dollars a pound. I still have to pay the debts. The city still has to pay the debts. So again, we'll keep an eye on it. We'll do what we can continue to do, but we could see some changeover in staff, but now eyes are laid in place, but.
Is that the primary lobbying or?
Yes, larger communities have their own lobbyists, but for, for most of us, it's definitely. But this is kind of what I explained to Cindy when we, when we met with them. You take the ladder truck conversation tonight. But like I said, less than ten years ago, that first out engine, half a million dollars. Now a million dollars, eight hundred, nine hundred thousand. If you can find a program, stable. But I, I mean, ten years, it doubled. Your taxes haven't necessarily doubled in that ten years. So we have cuts where we can cut. And yeah, we'll just, yeah, there's my, that's my spiel, but Tom asked me to.
And I hope that you repeat that at the LDC of the sixteenth, at least in some form. Thanks for that. Any questions, Chris?
I have one other thing. Water bills. I want to thank staff, especially Meredith, who's probably yielded about a thousand calls today. I'm telling people that, yes, their water bills are higher this month. Two months' worth of basically water usage. There is a minimum bill that you pay no matter whether you use one gallon or don't use leaving, that you're going to pay in Mount Vernon regardless. It's about sixty nine dollars. So it's your trash, sewer, water, everything. You're not getting, you're not going to rent an apartment or do anything in Mount Vernon and pay less than, than that dollar. That's what people were billed last month that didn't have a reading. I know it seemed like an early Christmas gift. It wasn't. We just had to wait till that we got the reading equipment up. So it will go back down to a normal read. But if you look at your bill up at the left, last month, you will see zeros. So they're welcome to call City Hall and, and ask for, for explanations. But that's the best that I can give you right now is, you paid the minimum last month, you're going to pay more this month. It will go back down following.
Maybe Nathan could put a paragraph in this thing. Why is my water bill high? Answered.
And a lot, I mean, I will say that everybody has been really good. It's complicated. We made two significant changes with a new water meter hanging in. We're transitioning from cubic feet to gallons. I actually had one person tell me that we should have left it alone because they understood the cubic feet better. So change necessarily went for trying. But once, once the transition is over, kind of like garbage, once we get through this transition period, I think everything will calm down. The other thing that I would say is, especially if you're like me who live in an older house, if your meter was ten years, fifteen years old, and it looks like you're getting built more, it's because the new meters will read more actively.
So we were getting a good deal.
We were. So meters, when they start to get old, will slow down. The components inside start to slow down. It's great for the homeowner. It's bad for the city because you're not capturing everything that's being used. It's now being captured. It's one of the, the items that the water meter companies will point to when you make this transition is to say you're going to capture usage that you haven't done. So if your bill hasn't necessarily like doubled or, you know, felt like you have a water leak and, but it's still slightly higher, it's because you've got a need.
Good point. Thanks for the explanation about the tax consequences and the water bills. Anything else that we need to discuss at this time?
Just building, just to have that conversation regarding the flag. I know Scott's not here tonight, so just whenever we can figure out when all five of us are here, I don't know the best way to go about that. Yeah, perhaps early February sometime.
We can put it on the next meeting as of this. Would you want to be able to take action that night or just discuss?
I'd prefer to take action if possible.
So we can add it to the agenda and if there's not, everybody's here, you're always welcome to table that if you want to have all, you know, all members and members.
Anything else that needs to come before this council? Otherwise, we got to adjourn. Thank you very much.